Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Montgomery County Civic Federation's special meeting on the More Housing Now proposal. Tonight's special guest is Andrew Friedson, the council member from District One. Councilmember Friedson was first elected in 2018 as the youngest council member in Montgomery County history, and he's also served as the youngest ever council president. He chairs the Planning Housing and Parks Committee, and he serves on the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee. He's a lifetime resident of Montgomery County, the sponsor of numerous bills, including the subject of tonight's meeting. Other important initiatives of his include establishing $100 million revolving Housing Production Fund, and he co-authored the county's largest ever climate investment with the Montgomery County Green Buildings Now Act. I'm sure there's much more, but time is short, so I will say thank you to Councilmember Friedson for being here. We appreciate your time, and you can begin.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Alan. Thanks, everybody, for joining. Appreciate the opportunity to join you virtually, at least here, and I see a lot of familiar faces, including many who have been to other of the conversations that we've had on the More Housing Now package. So normally, I do a PowerPoint presentation. I think a number of people here, most people here, have been to another presentation, so I'm not going to do that tonight to try to save as much time as possible for questions. I did want to just briefly go through some of the high-level items and then dig into questions and have an opportunity to have back-and-forth conversation with you all tonight. But I know how engaged this group is, and so I won't belabor and filibuster the time, and we'll reserve as much as we can for the questions that you're going to have tonight. But as everybody here knows, we introduced the More Housing Now package, working together with Councilmember Fonda Gonzalez as chair of the Economic Development Committee, and myself as chair of the Planning Housing and Parks Committee. There are five bold steps to increase housing supply, reduce costs, and increase pathways to homeownership. There are companion proposals to build more workforce housing, to convert vacant office buildings to housing, and to double the county's investment in assistance for first-time homebuyers, continuing in an effort that I have been working on and we have been working collectively on in recent years. We're trying to focus on strategies that provide the greatest opportunities to increase our housing supply while increasing access to the workforce. Our approach increases housing options along county quarters, and it doesn't propose zoning changes within residential neighborhoods beyond those that are fronting the quarters that are larger than 100 feet master plan width and three or more existing travel lanes. It's not nearly as broad as the attainable housing recommendations that were presented by the planning board to the council that we had the three committee work sessions on and the series of listening sessions. We heard a number of the concerns. It doesn't allow anything by right. It goes through the optional method development plan in terms of the zoning changes, and it's a much more targeted approach with a focus, as noted, on the quarters, which is consistent with the county's overarching land use policies and growth strategies. How did we get here? So on December 8th in 2020, many years ago at this point, almost, you know, four and a half years ago, Zoning Text Amendment 2007 was introduced by Councilmember Juando. That was while we were in the process at the Planning Department and before the Planning Board of the Thrive 2050 Discussion, hadn't even come to the council yet. There was also an early-stage proposal focused on corridor approach to what was then called "missing middle housing" by Councilmember Reamer, who chaired the predecessor to my committee that I currently serve on, that I served on then with Councilmember Juando and him. In response to that, the decision was made, and I was one of the main people who advocated for it. We were not ready. It seemed like we were putting the cart before the horse, and so the approach was to send to the Planning Board and to the Planning Department both proposals, the formal ZTA that had been introduced, Councilmember Reamer's idea that had not yet been introduced formally as his ETA, and asked them to come back to us with recommendations. That was done in March of 2021, almost exactly four years ago, and was to be consistent with what was the official housing policy of the county, which had been the housing policy of the county long before Thrive 2050, before I was ever elected, have a greater diversity of housing types within proximity to transit and to jobs and amenities. That was part of the housing element that was added to the existing general plan even before Thrive 2050 was taken up and formally adopted. That didn't come back to us until June 14th of last year, a little less than a year ago. Became the attainable housing strategies report, had a lot in it, large-scale, medium-scale, and small-scale. I won't relitigate or rehash what was in that because it's not before us. There was no formal legislative proposals, ETAs or otherwise, in that, but it was a series of recommendations that came before us. It was quite broad in nature that I know this group has discussed and weighed in on individually and collectively in a variety of capacities. Because of the breadth and the magnitude of those recommendations, I had suggested, as chair of the committee and council president at the time, two things. One, that we should take this up in committee in three different committee sessions to be briefed in public session at the large scale, the medium scale, and the small scale, three separate conversations that we had in June, July of last year, June 24th, July 8th, and July 22nd. And then ultimately, that we should go out and have geographically diverse conversations in the community to do listening sessions, that I would join the planning director, who would present the Planning Board and Planning Department's recommendations to the committee, would invite all council members to join us. We did those throughout the county in Silver Spring, Wheaton, White Oak, Germantown, and Bethesda, working with the regional service centers in those areas, and then also did a virtual one as well. We got a lot of feedback from a variety of stakeholders. Ultimately, that was summarized before the council in November. We had a dedicated portal. It was an unprecedented level of public outreach that we had done before any legislative proposal came before us. We heard you. We weighed all the feedback that we received and used that as the basis, including what we heard from housing experts of where the most benefit would occur in terms of addressing our housing, focusing on what was intended, which was really trying to focus on workforce housing specifically. We heard the concerns that were raised of, well, what about this vacant office, or what about that vacant office park, or what about this vacant mall space, and why aren't we focused there? And ultimately, we moved forward with the package that we have put forward that addressed many of the concerns, not going by right, not being as expansive as what was originally introduced, and putting a series of limitations on what would be allowed, but while still pursuing an interest in trying to address our housing challenges. We also heard from a lot of people of, well, why aren't we doing other things? Why are we doing this? Why aren't we focused on other aspects of the affordable housing challenge and housing affordability issues that we face? And the reality is, we are doing that too, and have been doing that too. You heard about the Housing Production Fund that Cheryl mentioned in her gracious abbreviated introduction, which I appreciate. There's also the $50 million nonprofit preservation fund that I championed that we've been working on. That's one of the most significant preservation efforts of any jurisdiction anywhere in the region, if not anywhere in the country. That Housing Production Fund that was mentioned is being replicated in jurisdictions all over the country, modeling after Montgomery County. And what we are doing here is a way to address mixed-income communities and affordable housing. We move forward with a green taping effort for mixed-income housing through a ZTA that I worked on with Lori Ann Sales. We had incentives to try to turn parking lots into places and into housing at metro stations. We have an incentive for nonprofits to provide payment in lieu of taxes or a tax abatement that is automatic for nonprofits that meet affordability thresholds, try to make it easier for them to go through the process. We have co-location on county-owned land. We've expanded our first-time homebuyer program even before this proposal. This would build on those efforts that I have been advocating for for several years. We move forward with expansion of what's called the HARP program, the Home Accessibility Rehabilitation Program, that helps at-risk homeowners age in place, either those who are older or who are disabled to make improvements to their homes so they won't be forced out by changes that they need to make. That's just a short list of the many things that we have been doing to address these issues, but we have been serious. We have been aggressive, and yet there's a lot more that we still need to do. And the one area that we really hadn't focused on up until this point is the workforce housing piece. That has not been an area that we have addressed nearly enough, and it's an opportunity that I think we have in moving forward with this proposal to try to address that. We're those who don't qualify for subsidized housing, which requires a significant amount of public incentives, but also is limited to those who are below certain thresholds of area median income, and those who couldn't possibly afford what are currently out-of-reach market rate housing, whether it's home buying or renting. As we were figuring out this proposal, we had two guideposts. How do we advance housing in the most meaningful way? And how do we focus on the who and the why? Our workforce being priced out of the market and not just the what, which was, you know, really being bogged down in what was presented to us through the recommendations that came to us from housing. So we emphasize workforce housing needs, increasing the housing supply, transforming office vacancies into housing opportunities, and expanding the pathways to homeownership. So that's, you know, ultimately what we've done. It's an economic issue. I could go on and on. You've seen the slides on that and have heard me talk about it. It's evident in the governor's discussion of the number of people who are leaving our state and citing this as their main reason, housing affordability. We've heard it from our businesses on their inability to recruit and retain employees. We see it in the elimination of Montgomery County's middle class and middle, the 25, you know, to 45 age range, depending on what study you look at. It's that working age population that we are really losing in a significant, in a significant way. So that's why we move forward with this five-part proposal. It was introduced, the legislative aspects of it on February 4th. I think today's conversation probably wants to focus quite a bit on the Workforce Housing Development Standards 2502, just to, you know, highlight what that is. Allows more residential types along corridors that meet the 100-foot of master plan width and three or more existing travel lanes. These are the large, you know, heavily traveled and traffic quarters in the county. It caps heights to 40 feet maximum, which is five feet above what single-family homes are capped at currently in these zones. It limits the FAR, the floor area ratio or density, to 1.25, so it limits it in that way. And if you are building three or more units, you are required to meet a workforce housing requirement of a minimum of one and a 15% workforce housing requirement, which is currently 70 to 120% of area median income. 120% of area median income currently is about $148,000 for a couple in Montgomery County now. So two workers making approximately $75,000 each. So that's largely the proposal. I'll just note two other aspects to it on the 2502 piece. For a duplex that's being built, it is held to the exact same standards as a single-family home. So if you're tearing down a single-family home or you're building a duplex under the standard, the single-family home you could do by right, and the duplex you would have to go through optional method. But in terms of the lot coverage and setback and other requirements, you would be held to the same standards, but of course, you'd have to go through an additional process as part of this proposal. For the larger number of units, triplex, et cetera, that would be held to the same standards as the lowest-intensity townhome residential standards in terms of setback, lot coverage, et cetera. So it's focused, it's targeted, and it is trying to address many of the concerns, specifically going from the by right to the optional method, to try to address many of the concerns that we heard from residents. There's the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot bill. It's coming up later this week in joint committee. That is the expedited bill 225. We had the expedited review process as part of that, the zoning piece of it, that came up today and was voted out of committee, along with the SRA, the Accompanied Subdivision Regulation Amendment. And then we have the ZTA 2502, the Workforce Housing Development Standards along the quarters, which is scheduled to come before the PHP Committee next week on Monday, the 31st. And then there, that I think pretty much covers it. There's a couple budgetary elements to it, a Workforce Housing Opportunity Fund that we are proposing, as well as expanding the first-time homebuyer program. I'm happy to go into detail of those as well, but in the interest of time, I'm trying to go through as quickly as I can for a very educated, in-depth group that I think already knows much of what I have just shared. I am happy to open it up to your questions as you have them.
Okay, hands up for questions? All right, I'll start then. One of the things that we hear about most often is stormwater management, and we were delighted when we saw in the environmental report of the planning staff that they were going to recommend no more waivers on stormwater management and maybe some stricter rules for the larger projects. So I testified in favor of that, and then after the public testimony was taken, the staff made their presentation of the Planning Board, and they withdrew that proposal, saying it had been included by mistake. And that's very disappointing, as you probably know, and the small things. And this isn't just multifamily housing. It happens with, when you build really big, single-family homes, they get a waiver from permitting on stormwater management, and then the water runs somewhere downhill or in someone's basement. And permitting takes the position that stormwater management is a civil matter between homeowners, meaning sue your neighbor. And I think it really comes across as quite inequitable to a lot of residents, that someone gets a waiver on stormwater, and the next thing you know, their basement is flooding, and they either have to fix it themselves or come up with the money for a lawsuit. And I guess my question is, what do you think can be done at stormwater management to try to, you know, stop this problem that we're having? What measures do you think could be taken? And if you have any idea why it was that the planning staff backed off of that recommendation?
I don't. I'm actually, I'm digging into that issue as we speak in preparation for next week's meeting. I don't have a specific proposal here. It's something that we have certainly heard and are sensitive to. It will definitely be a point of discussion at the committee, and we're going to have to work through that. So you're not alone in your testimony. We heard testimony from several others on that. I will say, it's a constant refrain that we hear in the teardown conversation as well, and not just in this proposal, but it is, you know, it's like tree canopy as well, and something that I've tried to address. I had a bill that I worked on with Councilmember Glass previously to increase the fees for, you know, tree replacement to make it more reasonable and appropriate to the actual cost, and make sure that the tree, you know, we want the trees planted where they actually are being taken. Most people don't care if a tree gets planted somewhere that they'll never see or don't feel like they'll benefit from. But yeah, we are, that is an area and an issue that
So when it came up
that will be taken up. But I don't know why specifically it was, the change was made by staff. I haven't had a chance to get information specifically on that.
So when it came up at the Planning Board, Mitchra made a comment off the cuff that the reason is nothing would get built if the builders couldn't get a waiver of stormwater management. I happened to meet an engineer from Richmond, Virginia, who worked in the Planning Department about a year ago, and I was talking to him about stormwater management, and he said, "Water can always be managed. It's an engineering problem, but it's an expense." And that's the issue, is who's going to bear the expense? And I feel like if the county wants to tell builders, "You don't have to pay it," then the county needs to figure out how to engineer stormwater management.
Yeah, that, this is the rub and always the kind of balance, and it's, you know, it's a legitimate balance. And the question is always, what is the concern, and how much does it impact the other priorities, right? So housing is a priority, and it's certainly a big priority of mine, as everybody here knows, and we can debate what's the best way to do it, and where should it go, and how much should it be, and what should the impacts be, and how do we address that? And I think there's very legitimate and, you know, honest and respectful, you know, discussion and debate and discourse that we can have on that. And then there's what are the requirements, and then how much the requirements cost, and what impact does that have on the ability to actually move forward with housing? So that, that is true. I mean, there's just no way around it. Every requirement that we place is an added cost, almost always, and those costs have an impact. The question is, how do you find the right balance of addressing very real and very legitimate concerns? And stormwater is one of the primary ones. I mean, stormwater, parking, you know, are probably the two biggest issues that we hear most often with, you know, development concerns. And they're legitimate issues, and we need to address them and do what we can to address them. But there's, there's always going to be the balance of trying to strike the right approach to make sure that we're not doing something that's so cumbersome that it prevents anything from happening. That, I don't think, is the best outcome, but does it in a way that actually legitimately addresses the concern, and that's what we're going to have to work through when we
Thank you. So we have a question here in the chat. Thank you for being here from Leslie Milano. Are there any points made during the public hearing that resonated with council members which would likely become an amendment?
Yeah, well, one, we're going to have to take up whether it will be a formal amendment or not, but a discussion is the stormwater that was just mentioned. Another one that is being discussed and worked through is the request that we've heard significantly on the, it's been referred to as chaining, although I'm not sure that's how I would refer to it personally, but whether or not a lot behind the budding lot can be combined, and whether that could encroach on the original intent, which was just to have the fronting properties along the corridor be included, and whether there's kind of a, so to speak, like a backdoor of going beyond what the intended scope was. We are looking at that. I think that ultimately will be. There's a, you know, our zoning attorneys have felt from the beginning that that's already covered in the zoning code, because those properties are already fronting another street, and that is the street that they are fronting. And you can't front two streets in that sense, but we are, you know, working through to, you know, kind of belts and suspenders on that to make sure that's addressed, because that is certainly the intention, and we want to make sure that the zoning text and the zoning language. But that's just two. There are a number of others, but yes, I think we listened during the listening sessions. We listened from a lot of feedback. Obviously, if we didn't want to listen to feedback, I think things would have been introduced in a different way than what we have before us. This is a much different-looking proposal, even on just the corridor ZTA 2502 zoning side that was originally put forward by, by planning as part of their recommendations. And so we're, we're listening. We're continuing to listen, and I think you'll see us doing what we can to address concerns to the extent we can while balancing our other interests.
Okay, John Holden.
Hi there. My question, this legislation is going to provide workforce housing in only 15% of the housing units in triplexes and larger properties, market rate housing in the other 85%, and in all of the duplexes. What elements of the ZTA 2502 would make it this package any less, I'll call it less unsuccessful than the workforce housing program that the county has had for many years? And would the council consider increasing the percentage of required, quote, "workforce housing units" above 15%?
Well, everything's a trade-off, and, you know, the higher you make the workforce housing requirement, the, you know, either the less likely any project happens at all, or the more expensive you make the other units. I mean, this is always the rub. It's in the MPDU program as well. It's not different. When I used to be a college access and affordability advocate, and there were suggestions of, why not just raise tuition, and those who can pay it, who are rich, can pay for it, and you give out more scholarships. And that was a model that was used by some. The challenge is, when you're just outside of what qualifies, you're out of luck, and you're raising the cost for everybody else. And so you're adding the squeeze on a group of people, and you're picking where that threshold is. So in all of these programs, there is a balance. That cost of the workforce housing, just like the MPU, to an extent, it's charged to the builder, but really, it's charged in the form of rent or costs to the other purchasers. That was the whole dynamic of creating the inclusionary zoning program in the beginning. And our numbers are already higher than in most other places. If you look at DC's inclusionary zoning for their version of MPDU program, it's a much lower number. It's a, it's lower than what we have gone above. You know, we used to be at 12 and a half in most places. We're now at 15 for MPDU, or proposing 15% for this. So it's a balance of trying to find the right way in which it allows projects to move forward. It doesn't place additional burdens and costs. I do think there's a benefit to having more housing in general. The supply is a key part of the problem. We cannot solve the housing challenges that we face without broadly increasing supply, but we also want to make sure that we are dedicating a portion for workforce housing as well. So, you know, I'll also note, you know, there's a lot of talk about naturally occurring affordable housing. Well, naturally occurring affordable housing was market rate housing 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. That's what it is. And so you don't have naturally occurring affordable housing unless you're building more housing. And we have gotten away from that, and I do think we need more housing. So there is a balance here of how do you increase supply of housing, and how do we put in reasonable requirements to make sure we're addressing different levels of affordability without either preventing any projects from moving forward or burdening every other unit with higher housing costs that they can't afford, and pricing others out of the market unnecessarily at an unreasonable level. So it's about striking a balance. We think we've struck that balance here, but, you know, this will always be till age memoriam. This will always be, you know, a continuous conversation that we'll continue to have of, you know, what is the right level, and whether, you know, we can go further or do more without, you know, creating more problems than we're solving.
Okay, Deborah Gonski. Deborah? We'll come back to
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm here. So I was interrupted by my child, so, so sorry. Who is not really a child anymore, but it doesn't really matter to them. So, so sorry. I think I had two questions, but keeping on the housing, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the impact of the bill that's in the state legislature, HB 503, SB 430, Housing for Jobs Act, talking about the requirements regarding the number of housing units that local Talking about the requirements regarding the um, number of housing units that local county governments need to um, produce to create a jobs to housing ratio of 1.5 based upon the number of jobs located in our region, so the Washington region. And how does that juxtapose with the fact that layoffs are real um, for, for, you know, federal workers and federal contractors? And that means for a lot of those people, they may not be living in houses in Montgomery County anymore. So I'm not sure if I perfectly.
Yeah, no, I, I think I understand the question. So the, the answer directly is it doesn't directly impact in the sense that we're not superseded on this particular proposal or uh, preempted. Uh, it does relate broadly to the question of housing. I, I will note a couple of things. One, the layoffs are real. The impact on our economy are real. Um, I ultimately think that, you know, we have a lot of things to work out and work through in our community, but I don't think that there's no longer going to be a market for housing uh, in Montgomery County. That's, that's my, you know, personal opinion. We can debate and, and discuss that. If at worst, there is no market for housing at all, then the argument for this, uh, against this would be it's a lot of brouhaha over nothing because nobody's going to do this because there's no market for it. Nobody's being forced to do anything. We're not, you know, nothing is happening unless there's a market for it. So if there is no market for it, then uh, all of the concerns that have been raised will be for naught because uh, nothing will, will happen. Now, I'm hopeful and I uh, am optimistic that uh, you know, despite the horrific actions and draconian uh, 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 you know, uh, dynamics that are occurring at the federal level, uh, that we will ultimately be able to emerge because of the strength of the talent of our workforce, because of the strong economic bones that we have. But it's going to be a painful reality for, for, for a while. And, and I think we have to acknowledge that there'll be tax uh, revenue implications. Uh, there'll be hurting families. Uh, there's going to be a lot of dynamics here that need to be uh, worked through uh, and figured out. But I don't ultimately think that all of a sudden this is going to be a place where nobody wants to live. I just, I personally fundamentally don't believe that. I've lived here all my life. I'm fully committed to it. I'm not going anywhere else. I married somebody who has lived here all her life. Like we're, we're, we're in it for, for the long haul and we got nowhere to go and we're not going anywhere. And uh, and I just don't uh, fundamentally believe that. I always think of myself as a near term realist and a long-term uh, eternal optimist. And you know, I would bet on Montgomery County any day of the week because you bet on talent and we have it here. That's not to say we don't have real challenges and issues that we need to work through in the near term, but I don't think that we're going to have no market for housing. I think the broader question of what's happening at the state is really important. And I just want to note this. The state is basically making a major statement to the county. Two things. Number one, housing is infrastructure. So we've always viewed that infrastructure has to support housing. And unless infrastructure is worked out, housing shouldn't move forward. And the governor's proposal is essentially flipping that on its head and saying, oh, no, 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 no. Housing is part of the infrastructure because we need housing to support jobs. We need housing to, you know, build communities. Housing is infrastructure and so we should view it that way. That's essentially at the core. If you take away all the fine, you know, details of what is being proposed and some of the questions of what has to be approved and under what circumstances at the hearing examiners, at the planning department, all those various dynamics, that's the message that is being sent loud and clear. The second piece of it is local governments, county governments, municipal governments have long been seen as obstacles to housing. And let's just face it. The state is stepping in to say, listen, for a long time, for decades and decades, we have delegated land use authority and being able to address housing to the local jurisdictions. And we've stayed out of it. Well, we're not necessarily going to do that anymore. So unless you all do more to address housing, we are going to step in and we are going to preempt your authority. And we are going to force your hand. And so that is the second message here. And I think we have to be honest about that. And I think we have to look in the mirror a little bit to say, okay, how are we going to address housing? I happen to believe in local government. I serve in it. And I believe that it can be a vehicle to do the right thing. But there is a real serious dynamic that is being raised here to say local governments have been part of the problem and we need to be part of the solution. And so that's why finding balance, trying to address these issues in a thoughtful way, moving forward with progress on housing, but doing it while retaining some level of local authority and reasonable, you know, thoughtful safeguards, I, I think is the best approach to addressing these issues. And I think if we don't, then we're in for a rude awakening of uh, the state uh, slowly but surely taking away local authority on the ability to address our housing challenges. If we're not going to do it, they are. And I think they've made that pretty clear. And I would prefer for us to address our housing challenges and to be serious about them and to move forward in ways that actually address the issue and, and move the ball forward and try to do so in a reasonable.
I'm gonna uh, just comment only, I think there's, I, I don't want to get too deep into that state proposal. I think there's some very faulty assumptions behind it. I think if uh, the problem was local regulations and local authority, we wouldn't have 35,000 units in the pipeline and room for three Pike and Rose developments in downtown Silver Spring. Um, that's not being taken up. The planning boards report on the Pike and Rose development. The developer said, our job outlook doesn't justify moving any faster on housing. So I think that it's much more complicated than what the state bill um, would have us believe. I, I know there's other people with questions about more housing now, so I'm going to call in Jackie Bocan next.
Our neighborhood is bordered by University Boulevard. The University Boulevard corridor plan allows a developer to acquire and develop multiple contiguous properties as a single development. But ZTA 2502 limits lot consolidation. Um, the corridor plan allows denser development by right, while the ZTA 2502 provides for the streamlined optional method of approval you already mentioned. And different floor height ratios and height standards are proposed by these two uh, different proposals. So which zoning standards take precedence?
Well, the University Boulevard plan is not before the council yet. It's at the planning department. So it's not that one would take precedence necessarily through the, the University Boulevard corridor plan. My understanding, but again, it hasn't come to the council yet. So I've only been, you know.
Well, if these two disagree when they come up to you, how do you?
At, at, at a high level, but ba- basically the university quarter plan is a, is a, is a master plan that has zoning for properties. You, you, that, that would, you would be able to move forward through the university quarter plan if you have the right to do that. So um, yeah, the, the university quarter plan on University Boulevard would be able to move forward if that goes through the council. But that has to, that has to go through the planning board, which hasn't gone through the planning board yet. It's just at the staff level, just beginning at the planning board. And then ultimately the planning board has to send the recommendations uh, to us. We, we have heard the, the questions uh, that folks have raised on how the juxtaposition of uh, the uh, quarter zoning text amendment versus the quarter plan uh, would interface? And when that comes to the council, we will take that up at, at the council. And I, and I imagine the planning board, when they take it up, will take it up as well. But certainly the county can't speak for the planning board of exactly what their process will be. But we will uh, certainly, you know, address that and, and take that up as that comes before us.
Alan Davis.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'd like to talk about the pilot program. Um, in the fiscal impact statement, the county estimated that the total cost over 25 years would be $2.6 billion. Under the assumptions here, which are as clear as mud, um, I'd like to, it seems as though they're saying that 17,000 units were built over the last 10 years. And that is the basis for which their projection is based on. Is that correct?
Well, that fiscal note is deeply, deeply flawed from my perspective. It makes a number of assumptions that I don't think are uh, particularly uh, realistic. I will note that, you know, that is a fiscal note that's being done by the executive branch. The executive has already announced that he's going to veto uh, the bill. Uh, so I understand their perspective and respect it, even if I disagree with it. They are assuming a number of things that, that, that I, I don't think are even remotely realistic. If we had that level of uh, development or, or, or redevelopment, this would be a completely different dynamic. The reality is in terms of office conversion, only about 7% of office conversions convert. Uh, currently, if we make a significant dent in that, that would be a positive uh, thing. And that's a national uh, trend. That's not just unique uh, to us. Um, they also don't account for the fact that the commercial properties, if they're 50% or more vacant, you know, which is a requirement of uh, of, of, of the expedited review and of the, of, of the pilot. Uh, they're already foregoing, we are already foregoing property tax. That's not included uh, in that. So you can appeal your property tax if uh, it's vacant. It doesn't account for the degradation of the property value, which impacts the uh, the buy value property tax rate that you're paying on the property. Doesn't take into account the net impact of the added income taxes that you get from residential uh, property uh, that you're not necessarily getting uh, from a commercial uh, property uh, in the, in the same, uh, in, in the same way. Um, it doesn't account for uh, impact taxes and other uh, fees uh, that would be uh, uh, received. Uh, if you look at actually the Washington Business Journal today talks about uh, an office conversion, a significant amount of uh, incentive that's provided by a DC. In a particular instance, they have a tax, a number of tax abatement programs that go from 20 years to 40 years uh, in terms of uh, their uh, abatements. And even in the generous uh, uh, abatement uh, program uh, that is being listed, even with a lower uh, you know, affordable housing MPDU requirement in DC uh, versus ours, it's significantly lower in DC than it is uh, in Montgomery County. Uh, there's a question of whether or not that project in DC will even pencil out and they can even get it financed. Uh, that doesn't include rent control, some of the other dynamics.
At some point in time, there has to be some math that makes sense that compiles the true cost to the taxpayer here. But if, if we buy the financial impact statement on face value, that it's $2.6 billion over 25 years, and they do build 17,000 more units in the next 10 years at 15%, that's roughly 2,500 affordable units at the cost of over a million dollars a unit. In light of the budget deficits for the state that are in excess of $3 billion and growing, how is it that the county can even conceivably afford to offer this? And isn't this a, you, you talk about lowering cost. How is this lowering cost for housing? This is cost, you're putting the obligation on developers to deliver 15% affordable and you're giving away 25 years worth of taxes for 15% of the housing. It makes no financial sense. The cost that we all will bear, my real estate taxes just went up 30%. 10% a year, well and above the cost of inflation. And then our county executive wants to increase the tax rate on top of that.
I'll support that, as you know. Um, your taxes, your taxes are going to, your taxes are going to go up if, if we don't grow the county. I mean, that's, that's just the bottom line. If there are fewer people paying taxes, taxes are going to go up. So there is a balance here. I understand what you're saying, Alan, and we've had lots of discussions, which I appreciate. The, the $2.6 billion number, I mean, this is, it's a practice called spiking the fiscal note. I worked in Annapolis for a long time before I was elected to the council. I know how this works. The county executive is opposed to it. Uh, he has uh, his folks put together a fiscal note that is as extreme as it could possibly be. I get that. It's, it's, you know, it's how the game is played. I totally, uh, I, I totally understand. Uh, we're talking about a limited number of 50% or more vacant offices. This isn't like you get a tax abatement for any housing that gets built anywhere, no matter what. These, these are underutilized properties where we are losing tax revenue. We are losing tax revenue on them right now. You are paying more in property taxes for vacant buildings that are underutilized, that are not paying nearly as much in property tax and are paying very little or nothing in other types of tax.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the county just do a zoning overlay on all of these empty office buildings that allowed for duplexes, multiplexes, apartments? And just allow as a natural course, just like the last 17,000 units that were built, let them build it that way. I mean, if, if that's such a drag on.
Just, you know, the zoning tech, that's what the zoning text amendment does. So just, I mean, a, a version of that. It allows, it allows for it to be possible in some cases, because some places it's literally not possible, like in the uh, in certain zones, not even allowed to turn a commercial office that's vacant into residential. Even in those cases, it's still cost prohibitive for some of these projects to move forward. So they're still going to lay vacant. And so the question is, if you want something to happen, as we heard loud and clear, people want these vacant buildings to be the place where housing occurs, you have to incentivize it. What that incentive should be, whether you think it's too much, I can understand and respect that. But there's a reason why other jurisdictions are doing this as well. There's a reason why DC is moving forward with this. There's a reason why other jurisdictions are moving forward with this. If you want to incentivize conversion of vacant, underutilized office, which is a growing problem in Montgomery County, like in other places around the region, around the country, you have to incentivize it. If you don't incentivize it, it's not going to happen.
So, so you're saying, so you're, hold on a second. So you're saying that if you do an adaptive reuse on it, on a 50% or more empty office building is more efficient than just tearing the building down and allowing new housing to be built just as a zoning overlay? So that you could build more efficiently? You could do multifamily? You could do duplexes, quadplexes? Everything that you're talking about doing in.
I'm saying even allowing, even, even allowing the repurposing rather than adaptive reuse will not happen in many cases without an incentive. That's what I'm saying. And that, and that is true of other jurisdictions too. That's why DC is incentivizing it like we are. That, that's, that's the reality.
All right, this is turning into a debate. Eileen Finnegan in the chat has, doesn't have a, a microphone and she wants to ask a question about what seems to be the appropriateness of giving this tax credit to places like Westfield Montgomery Mall or the new Geico lot or things that are likely to be highly profitable buildings. Does, should everybody be getting this 25 year tax holiday?
Well, everybody is not necessarily getting the tax holiday. It has to be uh, vacant office. I think there's a, you're, you raise a, a, an important question of exactly what qualifies for it and under what circumstances. But everybody does not qualify uh, for it. And it is, you, you would have to qualify under the requirements that we have as part of the expedited review and as part of the zoning text amendment. In fact, you know, today we had the discussion of what should be included and what shouldn't be included on the expedited review piece. And we'll have the discussion of what should be included uh, on the uh, uh, on the, on, on the broader piece. Westfield Montgomery Mall is not 50% vacant.
Okay, I think she was thinking about, she mentioned the Sears site. Um, so maybe she was thinking it's commercial. Okay, Jerry Garson, go ahead.
How many vehicles are registered per housing unit in Montgomery County excluding nursing homes and assisted living units? I think that one parking spot per unit is unreasonable in a county such as Montgomery County that's considered a suburban county. And we see if you drive down Randolph Road, a huge number of really small houses have like three, four or five cars parked in front of them. To try to do this is just going to make a mess and probably require a lot of streets, such as in my neighborhood, it's becoming one-way streets. Because we just, you can't pass with two cars are parked on the street. You can't pass. You can't pass. And we see after school, regularly we get confrontations between students and residents, each one trying to go on basically what has been created as a one-way street.
Yeah, Jerry, I appreciate that. As I mentioned, we heard parking loud and clear. As you'll note, the recommendation that came from the planning board to us recommended a series of reductions in parking. You'll note very clearly that that is not included in this proposal because of the concerns that many have raised about parking particularly. We did not include the reductions in parking as part of this proposal for the very reasons that you, that you stated. So I appreciate that concern. We tried to address it by not including that. There are still folks who want that included and feel like it is a climate requirement that we be more aggressive in that regard. But we're trying to find the right balance, and that's why we didn't include those recommendations as were put forward and proposed to us, based in many ways on the feedback that we received.
But part of the problem is everyone planned on all these people trying, taking a train into their federal government jobs in Washington DC. As far as I can see, there probably will never be in the next four years, any new jobs created for people to come here in Washington DC. So we have to really reexamine our whole method of thinking they're gonna commute into Washington DC, the federal government or contracted jobs.
Okay, Britt Yitzhak. Unmute yourself. Britt. Joy Squads.
Okay, unmuted. Hi Andrew, how are you?
Hi Joyce, I'm fine. How are you?
Okay, I have actually two things. One is, you talked a little bit about stormwater, and I'm gonna push back a little bit on cost. We did some work on our house about 20 years ago. We sit uphill from the house next door. And when I was working with the contractor, one of the things we talked a lot about was that I did not want water from my house to go down to our neighbor's house. That was based on somebody across the street having had the same problem. It was not prohibitively expensive to fix it or to have it planned right in with the design. So I'm gonna push back on the argument that this is too expensive. It's not. And I think most people moving into our neighborhoods want to be responsible neighbors and don't want to be pushing water down, stormwater down to their, to their neighbors. So that's just a comment. I just don't buy that it's too expensive.
And just, just to be clear, I agree, I agree. And what I was saying is we need to take that up. I was responding to the point that Cheryl made of what she heard. And I said, that is always the question in the balance of how do you find the right way to balance it? We, you know, you do add cost when you add requirements, but it's a legitimate issue. It's an important issue. It's something that we hear about all the time, as we should. And we have to take it up as we will in committee on Monday. So we're, we're not actually disagreeing, we're not disagreeing there. I was making a broader point to Cheryl's comment that, that she made of, you know, providing the-
I understand that, but I, from personal experience and the experience of the people across the street who themselves paid to fix it for their neighbor who got flooded, it's not that costly to do it right.
Push back broadly, not necessarily on me. I hear you.
Yeah, okay. No, it wasn't for you. It was just-
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Make the point.
I just wanted to clarify, make sure it wasn't misinterpreted of what I was sharing, but I appreciate that.
My other question goes to schools, which I know is not part of this ETA, but it is part of what's considered infrastructure. And planning has always told us, or MCPS, they get their numbers from MCPS. For years, they've said, we know how to count. I think you're aware that Bethesda Elementary has been overcrowded for years. And most recently, Dr. Taylor has offered that students can actually move to other schools because they don't have any place to put them and can't put temporaries into work and so on. So what is going to be done to make sure that student counts are? I mean, I'm sure it happens other places besides Bethesda Elementary. You know, what, how can you and others, and how can this, if it's implemented, be done in a way that assures that we're going to get accurate student counts and have places to put the children that hopefully will move into some of these homes if they're built? I mean, I don't think you're looking for only, you know, parents without two, two, two people without children. I think we're looking to move families in, and they're going to send kids to school.
Yeah, my hope is yes, Anne. I hope we have families and I hope we have single workers and dual income workers. And I hope we have older adults. I mean, the goal would be to have housing for everybody. But that should include families with, with, with children. I was at Bethesda Elementary School, meeting with the principal and the PTA recently. This is an ongoing concern. I walked to Bethesda Elementary School from where I live. I live in the cluster. I'm zoned for Bethesda Elementary School. I do not provide children to Bethesda Elementary School currently. That's probably of great benefit to Bethesda Elementary School and probably to any prospective child, you know, potentially, but I kid. This is, this is an ongoing question and, and, and issue. I have advocated for capacity at Bethesda Elementary School. I will say for many years that the school board was actually the one that removed that. It wasn't the planning department that removed that. It was the school board said they didn't need it. They made changes to Westbrook and, you know, to Somerset. There was space there. There were other dynamics in play. We've now tried to move forward with portables for the, for the time being and to look at a permanent solution elsewhere. I think there were options, including properties, single-family properties that the school system had purchased that could have been utilized and weren't. I mean, there, there's a number of, of, of dynamics here. There is a boundary study. I know boundary studies are controversial, but at the adjacent elementary school properties, that was delayed and I think is gonna move forward. The goal being to address some of that. But it's, it's an ongoing question and concern. Some, some of it is the numbers. Some of it is the way that the numbers are even calculated, some of which is from planning, but really a lot of it is even the way that programmatic numbers are included. There are a number of issues that have come to light that I've learned from the principal, even in our most recent meeting of some students that come in particularly mid-year and how that's calculated and what impact that has, you know, on the ground in reality that we, we have to address. I'll just note from my perspective, I think new development is often kind of pointed to as the problem. Neighborhood turnover is not thought of often. Most of the school population challenges come from neighborhood turnover. But the challenge in this conversation has always been that one group of people thinks that neighborhood turnover is not an issue at all and doesn't create, it's like a static thing, which it's not. Most people live in their homes because it's a desirable place to live for 30, 40, 45, 50 years. That means two, three, four student cycles, which means for 30, 35 years of the time that you live in that house, you have no students there. And then you sell that house for whatever reason, and you downsize, you move out, you retire and move to grandchildren that live out of state, you pass away. There are lots of reasons. You lose a spouse and you wanna, you know, move to a different place. And a family oftentimes moves in with schoolchildren. And that, you know, adds students, significant students. But there's another group of people that says that multifamily doesn't create any students. There are no families that live in multifamily. And I live on battery. I go by school bus stops in multifamily buildings every day. I can attest with definition and consistency that multifamily does have students. And so neither, there's no like specific, this creates all the problem, this creates none of the problem, this has issues, this doesn't. It's much more nuanced than that. And I do think that there is refinement and improvement that we can do. I don't think that stopping development and housing is the answer to that issue, but it doesn't mean that it's not an issue. It doesn't mean that it isn't something that we need to resolve.
No, I'm not suggesting it's something to stop development. I, I'm asking it is something to be addressed. I mean, and I too get behind the school buses from the apartments that are two blocks from my house. And the kids just pour out of it and run into the apartments, you know, excited kids and so on. I love having them around. And, but, you know, we need to make sure we have space for them. And children do live in apartments.
Yes, that's true. Again, I, I think addressing those issues is important. There, there are some dynamics of what is the availability of school resources and buildings and how we are addressing those issues with capacity and what we are following through on in terms of, of that. You know, there are the questions of, you know, boundary conversations of neighboring elementary schools, for instance, even within the same cluster. I mean, there, there are a number of ways to address some of these issues, which I think across the board, on the planning side, on the school board side, we can all do better and the council can be a part of that conversation and should be.
Okay, Britt Yitzhak. Just one more thing, Cheryl. Please keep in mind that it's Montgomery County schools have been a big draw for people coming here. And based on my conversations, people are losing their confidence in them. And I think we need to make that a high priority to build that and keep it.
Okay, Britt, your turn.
Hi, thank you. So I wanna go back just really quickly, because Jackie mentioned before that the University Boulevard corridor plan, it's not before the county council right now, but it's still in the works. So just one really quick question before is that how are, how is that going to take place if they kind of go against each other? And what is the, I guess, for lack of better words, what is the point of them writing this whole plan just for it to get in front of you and then you guys turn it down because of the more housing now?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we're gonna turn it down because of more housing now. I just, I, I don't think that that's, it's not like an up or down vote. There are frequently times where different aspects of zoning changes have an impact on other zoning changes. In fact, you know, I can name a few completely unrelated things. We were dealing with the public benefits points, that, you know, the, the points that you get for doing certain public benefits, which is a proposal that we're taking up separately from, from these issues. That's part of the zoning code as well. That has an impact on, for instance, the, the medical area, the life sciences cluster in Shady Grove, as well as in White Oak. And there are a number of layers and moving parts to zoning and to different changes that we make within the code that happens all the time. And how those interface and how we reconcile them is part of the regular course of our deliberations and of doing business. It's not an up or down dynamic. It's not like a, you know, we'll accept this and we'll reject that. We, we have to figure out how all the different puzzle pieces work together. I understand that's complicated and it's not the cleanest and easiest answer. And I understand the, and appreciate the anxiety that that can create, you know, at, at times. But, you know, ultimately, we are gonna have to work through and, and figure out how the, the different dynamics interplay. It's not just these two. There are other things as well. They may be more minor from your perspective than others, more kind of technical by nature, and less from your perspective, probably, you know, existential for you and for your family. But it's, it's, it's not abnormal in the sense that there are different aspects of zoning that we're taking up and the, the different layers of the zoning code do interplay in different ways. And we have to reconcile and, and take that up in due course as part of our deliberations.
Liz Joy. Oh, sorry, you, go ahead.
Yeah, because there was this one other part, because you were talking about the, well, with the interactive map. Because you have the, the orange, whatever is marked orange. And council member Natalie in the, in the hearing, she did state that it was a mistake when someone testified that a library was gonna be taken away. So then she said, no schools and no libraries. But the interactive map hasn't been updated. Will it be updated? Because I still see Northwood High School is highlighted in orange and that hasn't been taken care of. Right down the street from there, there's a whole area of just trees. Is the council gonna take down a part of a forest to build up whatever they need in order for this plan? But also, Northwood High School is in the middle of being rebuilt. So how does that work into the Housing Now plan?
Yeah, just to clarify, and I'm not sure I would have framed my response in the way that Councilman Fonny Gonzalez framed hers at the public hearing. So I don't wanna kind of speak to that or harp on that. Nothing in this proposal is forcing anybody to do anything. It provides an option for property owners to be legally allowed through a particular process to move forward with specific things under certain requirements. That, that's what it does. In the case of Northwood High School or in libraries and others, the county is not building triplexes where Northwood High School is. We just spent a huge sum of money to build Northwood High School. The county can't even do that. It's, it's a school board property. It's owned by the school system. It has to go through the state. There's a disposition process. In the case of county-owned property, we actually do already have co-location on county-owned land for housing. There's a requirement when projects are moved forward on county-owned land, not school, not public schools, but other county properties. They have to look at childcare options. They have to look at affordable housing and housing options. So that's already in, in, in the mix of considerations that have to happen. But ultimately, nothing is being forced or required. And it's always a consideration to address housing and childcare in any disposition of, 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 of public property. So I, I think what she was, well, I don't wanna speak to what she was. I wouldn't have framed my, my response or my comments in the same way that she did. I'm not, you know, questioning or second guessing. I will just say, nobody, including the county, is being forced to do anything. And currently, right now, the county is required to look at housing and childcare as part of major capital projects on county-owned land already, as part of those projects. So having a childcare facility within a library, for instance, if we were to build a, a new library, et cetera. In the case of schools, schools are actually not county property. Schools are school board property, which is really state property. And because they get state funding in order to dispose of those properties, they actually have to get approval by the Board of Public Work, which is a state body, in order to happen. So again, nothing is uncomplicated in government. So I hope I didn't add to the confusion. I hope I took away a little bit of it. But it's, I appreciate the question and hopefully I helped a little bit in the response.
I love it. Thank you.
Liz Joyce, quickly. You're muted, Liz.
Sorry about that. Yes, Jackie's question and Britt's question bear on the same issue, which is that there seem to be so many contradictions, so much unclear overlapping among these various proposals, especially the corridors versus the, the, the more housing now. And it's difficult for residents, particularly since many of these bills are written rather, in a rather opaque fashion, to figure out exactly what the, what the impact will be. And speaking of framing, you know, it concerns me a lot when it's said, well, you know, it's either more housing in the, in the way we're proposing it or not doing anything, and then the state will force us to do it anyway. Well, the state already has the authority. The state grants all of the zoning authority to localities already. So they have the authority. But the question is, when people raise serious and well-thought-out questions about numbers, mathematics, as Mr. Davis did, as Mr. Connor did from the World Bank at the recent hearing, it's really reasonable to expect that, well, more of an answer than this is something we will take into account. Yes, we hope you will, but the question is always timing. And it's always, this is a rush. This is a, you know, this must be expedited. We have to do this now. How about stepping back, especially under the, the financial circumstances, and looking at the big picture, particularly the numbers? Because they're very valid, well-thought-out questions about the mathematics of all this.
You know, I don't think we're rushing anything. I think all evidence to the contrary. This has been a conversation that started almost five years ago. As was noted, we got recommendations almost a year ago, last June. We slow-played it, if anything. And I was, you know, only in local government can I be both accused of unnecessarily delaying this with listening sessions that gave voice to, you know, not a representative sample of the community and somehow ramming this through on the community without any consideration of resident feedback. I have been accused of both, to be very clear. I have been vilified in, in both regards. I have been accused of both, to be very clear. I have been vilified in, in both regards. I have said from the beginning, we're going to try to be thoughtful and methodical in our approach. I think we have been. We have taken our time here. We are not rushing it through. We, you know, did all of the listening sessions that we have. We did three committee work sessions before we even had legislation before us. We're taking this up, you know, piece by piece and, you know, are having a deliberative, you know, discussion and work session. We separated out the, you know, the zoning text amendment and SRA conversation from today in committee. And we're having a separate conversation next week. If we need to have multiple conversations, we will. And then it will go to full council and there'll be plenty of conversation there as well. So I don't think we're rushing this through. I think all evidence has demonstrated that we haven't. There was discussion that we were going to take a vote in October on a proposal that hadn't even been introduced. That was not accurate. And so, you know, we've been accused of rushing this through from the beginning. And the beginning was before anything was even proposed. So I don't think we're rushing this through. And the question that you asked in the chat, I was trying to monitor the chat a little bit too. You asked about property tax revenues and percentage. Give or take, I just want to give rough estimates, but, you know, basically, almost 90% of the county's revenue comes from, from property tax and income tax combined. It's, it's almost split 50-50 between that. So it's a little bit, you know, half of that, you know, 40-45% in property tax, close to that in, in, in income tax. So we're primarily funded as a county government through property and income tax and then a series of other sources of tax revenue, the fuel energy tax on buildings that the residents don't pay, but, you know, commercial properties pay and a series of other, you know, revenue streams that we have that, you know, are small, you know, individually are small but make up a, a, a portion and a piece, and a piece of that.
Okay, Patricia Johnson.
Hi, Councilmember Friesen. Just an act, a question. You spend a lot of time and money and discussion about development. What about jobs? You don't move to this county for a house. You move to this county for a job. And I think the job situation, when the county and the federal government are the biggest employer, you've got a problem. So with layoffs at $28,000 for the federal government and your jobs act that produced 40 jobs in about, under a year, what can we do to accelerate jobs that are well-paying so that people can afford their houses?
Well, I appreciate that. I think you need both. And actually, in the discussions with businesses, they have overwhelmingly suggested that housing is part of the issue with jobs. So I don't think that it's one or the other. And there's, as I mentioned, there is ample evidence to suggest that. The governor has talked about that incessantly. The comptroller has talked about that in her State of the Economy report from last year, that the housing supply shortage that we have and the cost of housing in general is a frequent concern that she hears and that others hear from businesses that have raised this issue. So I don't think it's jobs without housing. I also don't think it's housing without jobs. I think you need both. That's why I have focused a lot on both. You mentioned the, the jobs incentive program. That took a lot longer to get off the ground than I would have liked. I have been upfront about that. I will note that it has finally moved forward and has been very successful. And in fact, it is oversubscribed at this point. In fact, on the two funds, the discretionary funds, the Innovation Fund and the Founder's Equity Fund, there was concern that those wouldn't be utilized at all or nearly enough. And in fact, they were oversubscribed, both of them were. And according to the briefing that we had in the Economic Development Committee that I joined for, given the topic, we actually went back as a county to the folks who qualified and said, do you really need all of the money? Or could you use a portion of it? Would you still, that still benefit you being able to move forward in the various activities that you have for, for economic growth? And they came back and they were able to expand the number of businesses that it impacted. So the, the case in time point was limited because it was delayed in getting off the ground. It took several months longer than I would have liked, as I mentioned, but actually that has been successful. My goal would be to do more of that because I actually think it has moved the needle. And in fact, I joined the county executive doing economic development recently. And the new jobs initiative, my new jobs initiative, was specifically cited repeatedly as one of the selling points for the county to lure and attract businesses from outside of Montgomery County into Montgomery County and pairing that with some of the other incentive programs that the state provides and that the county already has, including the codification of the MOVE program and the expansion of that program. So, you know, ultimately, I think you need both. That's why I have focused a lot on both. I don't think that addressing jobs without housing will solve the problem, but I also don't think only focusing on housing without jobs will leave us where we want to be either. So it's an and question, not an or question. I don't think you can, you know, only do one and actually move the ball.
I think jobs sadly lacking behind, just, just to note.
Well, certainly our economic growth has lagged behind.
Lagging behind, we're in a deficit.
Pat, we totally agree with that. We've had stagnant economic growth. I do think housing is part of that, but it's not the only part of that. And that's why, that's why we need to do both. I, I am trying my best. As hopefully you know, I have voted against some of the anti-business efforts, including rent stabilization, which I think has had a negative impact on the broader conversation when it comes to county investment. I voted against tax increases, which I think, you know, have been a negative and have painted us in a negative light for business investment. I have tried to, you know, reduce the regulatory red tape in a number of areas. So I'm, I'm, I'm working at it and I'm trying.
Councilmember, can you stay for two last questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to grab my light because the sun went down and I. I noticed I was disappearing, so.
You were, and you were morphing and you had lumps.
Yeah, yeah. So sorry. I was going to either change my background or do that because I thought it was distracting.
So two last questions. Amy Whitechop, you can go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Just a quick one. About the map, I'm still not clear on why libraries and schools are on there at all. And then maybe you, you seem to start to talk about it. Can you comment on Montgomery Perspective article that cited real estate developers saying that Montgomery County has become a pariah in terms of development? That's all.
Yeah, that's, I'll start with the second. I was actually just speaking of that earlier. That is, that series is specifically focused mostly, but not exclusively, on rent stabilization. There was a national conference and what was cited out of that conference was a number of states. The only local jurisdiction listed was Montgomery County as places that were essentially blacklisted from, from investment. And it was specifically related to rent stabilization and the vacancy control and a number of other elements of that program. I voted against that. I didn't support it for the very reason that I was concerned that that would, would happen. And in some ways, you know, it has, you know, exacerbated the challenges that we have. And it's a very expensive problem because, you know, ultimately, you know, we, we need to manage our way through it. I'm very concerned about it. The tax dynamics are challenging as well. It's why I have taken the position that I had, not just for residents, but also for our, you know, business competitiveness and our ability to attract private sector investment. It's a real challenge and a real problem that we have in the county. But that, that is specifically what, what that series is focused on and what is, is being referenced there. And it's something that I warned about. I came up with a different proposal that would have been more of a consumer protection, anti-gouging measure that would have prevented these huge increases from a relatively small number of bad actors that were raising rents at astronomical rates. We're hearing these horror stories of, you know, 30, 40, 50% rent increases, which are absurd and completely unacceptable. And there's no real justification for them. And I think we could have prevented those with anti-gouging, preventing double-digit rent increases, for instance. That's what I had preferred, which I think would have addressed the problem in a much more nuanced way that wouldn't have had the unintended consequences and would have focused exclusively on the renter and not on the unit. Vacancy control, which was included, means that it's not that a additional rent increases can't be charged on a tenant. It said that when the tenant leaves, that unit is protected for the next tenant. And what that means is you can't make improvements. It doesn't account for the fact that there is, you know, a period of, you know, a month or two or longer where that unit is vacant. It actually has a perverse incentive of increasing rent while the tenant is in the unit because you can't effectively catch up to the market. If you have a tenant that stays for, you know, five, 10 years, you know, you might not want to increase much, if not at all, on that tenant because you don't have to repaint and you don't have to, you know, redo the, the cabinets or, you know, you know, kind of do the regular, you know, wear and tear, you know, type of stuff. When they move out, you do that maintenance, then you want to catch up. You know, you also have to offset the fact that you had those few months that, that were open. So I, I opposed that for, for that reason. In terms of the schools and the county-owned land, that is just a function of the fact that it is zoned in the zones that are listed. So that school that you're talking about that is included is in an R60 zone or an R90 zone or an R200 zone. That means right now, someone could build single-family homes on that, you know, which, which would probably go for more money than a school that makes no money. Now, do I think that the county is ever going to tear down a school and build single-family homes? No, I don't. And I have evidence to prove that because we have vacant green space in Potomac, where a soccer field was considered and contemplated at one point, where an organic farm was for a period of time. My parents, both of the elementary schools that they attended, my mom for the entire time, my dad for a period of time, Rollingwood Elementary and Radnor Elementary School in, in Montgomery County Public Schools, both of those are zoned to be, you know, they could be housing because they're in a residential zone. That's where schools are generally located. They're zoned. As such, those have been buildings that have not been, you know, torn down and replaced with homes, even though they're not even existing operating schools. They were, one was a holding school and one was leased as a private school to the French school at, at Rollingwood. So the reason why it's on the map is just a function of the fact that it is currently zoned as a residential property that meets the qualifications. Does that mean that it is ever going to be redeveloped as residential? No, it doesn't. Does that change any dynamic there? Not especially and not particularly because the, the county's interest is having the school or the, or the library. In the case of the libraries, as I was mentioning, and rec centers and other dynamics, the county already has a policy that it must look at the co-location of housing and childcare when it does a major renovation or reconstruction project of one of those properties.
Yeah, so it, it would make sense if they put that explanation on the map. Because it's, because you've had a lot of people complaining in all these hearings about that issue and, and wasted.
A good suggestion. I will follow up and see if we can include a note about the public property, you know, noting that, you know, some of the properties included are public institutions, including schools and libraries, and, and explain that in a more succinct way than I just tried to. And Cheryl will appreciate the more succinct, I know. She's, Nancy, I appreciate it.
So, you know, on the subject of rents, I feel like I just should inject here something that I'm kind of passionate about, which is the RealPage software program. You probably know the D.C. Attorney General sued about 14 big developers. That happened quite a while ago. They basically collude in this software program and all set their rents together uniformly high, so it eliminates competition. And I, when that hap, that lawsuit happened, I looked up all of the companies and most of them were doing business substantially in Montgomery County. And Anthony Brown just filed a lawsuit, you know, those lawsuits, the Biden administration, they've been going on for a while, for the last couple of years. I think Anthony Brown just filed one for the state of Maryland. So it'll take a while to deal with it, but one of the things I'm wondering is, these bad actors are the biggest actors in the county who are using this software program to set rents uniformly. And it includes people like Bezuto, who, you know, then go to planning and get approvals to put up another big building and then use this software program so the starting rents are very high. So is there something else that you think you could do at the council level about that software program while we're waiting for the lawsuit to make its way through?
I don't think there's anything we can do at the council level. We, we have had discussions with Anthony Brown. You know Brian Schwab is the D.C. Attorney General pretty well and have spoken to him about it in, in some level of detail. It really, in that sense, it's really an attorney general issue. I mean, we can deal with it on a case-by-case basis to the extent that we can, but on the macro level dynamic. I, I will note, the one way I do think we could address this, and I know this might not be the most popular answer in this, you know, proverbial virtual room. One of the reasons why, the main reason why, from my perspective, that there is such a power imbalance, where something like that is even possible, is that there's a lack of supply of housing. So the power is exclusively rested in the landlord. This is, they control a limited resource that people want. And as a result, they have the ability to do what you're talking about. If there was a greater supply of housing, there would be a less opportunity to be able to do things like that. I understand that's not the most popular.
Really unpopular with me, but.
Response, but I do, I, I do think.
Participants in that are under a lot of pressure to bring in new people into the system so that it keeps working.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way that those, the newer buildings, the way the newer buildings work, what, what they end up doing, what they end up doing, from, from what I have seen, what they end up doing is they set the rents high and then they offer concessions. So they offer the one month free, two months free. That way they can sell to their institutional investors that the rents are high to be able to, you know, prove that they got the rents that they thought that they could get to, you know, justify the loans that they received and to prove that they're going to be able to consistently return capital to the institutional investors. Because the reality is there is a fairly consistent way in which most of these projects are financed. It's not like the, you know, companies that you were mentioning earlier are the ones that are actually financing them with their own money. They're financing a piece of it, but not the majority piece of it with their own money. And then largely, they're taking out debt for, for some of it, and they're bringing in large institutional investors. Those large institutional investors are looking at higher rent returns. And the reality is the rent increases across the board in D.C. and in Montgomery County are not that high. In terms of the numbers, it's, it's actually, I mean, it's one of the challenges, even without rent stabilization, this market, I mean, if you looked at the, you know, it's one of the reasons why I thought that the rent stabilization bill and going as far as the council did was unnecessary and would do more harm than good. The, the, the long period of time that you looked at rent increases was lower than the increase in inflation. It was 2.1%. And so, yes, there are these examples of individual rents that are absurd amounts that should be booted out. Yes, there are examples of institutional investors coming in and buying up old properties and jacking up the rents to bring them up to market because they were seen as being, you know, below-market rent. And residents were benefiting from that in a good way. They were, you know, able to access communities and areas that otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have, have done. But what you're seeing with some of those issues is that these companies are trying to kind of prove to the institutional investors that their investment was, was, was quote-unquote a good investment. But it is, it is a problem. It is a challenge. It is something that I know Anthony Brown and his office are working on. And obviously, you know, Brian Schwab has addressed, you know, to a certain extent in D.C.
Okay, one last question. Carrie Lamari, you have to be quick. We've kept, we're over time here.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hey, Andrew, how you doing?
I'm fine, Carrie. How are you?
I'm good. My question to you is, when you talked about chaining, you talked about the rear property, okay? My question really deals with side yard setbacks and the front property. How will, how will the More Housing Now proposal interact with Chapter 50, re-subdivision of property? re-subdivision of properties, which in effect, they could build one block of property in the front, remove any setbacks between the individual lots and actually build more housing? Okay? Which could create other problems. And the second question I have is, when we deal with optional method, okay? In floating zones, the planning board has a lot more discretion. They're able to look at lot to lot flooding. They're able to look at tree canopies. They're able to look at school capacity, overcapacity. They're looking at, they can look at traffic, cars, cars being parked in the street and all those things. That's in the, in floating zones. Now, will this proposal in the residential properties, will the planning board have more discretion as, you know, as it relates to this optional method to be able to turn down if there's unusual circumstances that could be deleterious to the surrounding community? You see? So those are my two questions.
Okay.
Chapter 50 and, you know, the other one. Okay?
Yeah, so in terms of adjacent properties, you could acquire multiple properties. That is true. Anybody could do that. They still do have the setback and lot coverage requirements. And there still is the FAR and other limitations. So there are.
They wouldn't have the setbacks if they re-subdivided it into one block, one lot. And Chapter 50 does have a re-subdivision provision that allows you to buy several properties, re-subdivide it, you know, as long as it meets the standards, which is 25 foot minimum frontage, road frontage. And then you would get rid of the side yard setbacks in the in-between properties. Do you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I do see where you're coming. I can take a look, I can take a look at that. I see where you're coming from on that. I will take a look at that and I will take a look at that, Carrie.
And the second thing is about optional, optional methods.
Yeah, and they're going to have to go through the optional method. They're going to have to go through the optional method development process, which will provide the planning board with the process that the optional method development process sets forth.
Will they be able to use the same discretion in this housing redevelopment as they do in floating zones under the optional method?
It's not a floating zone. I'd have to go, I'd have to go through and do a side by side comparison of that. So I can follow up on that.
Well, the way I understand it, you know, I've developed several properties here in the county. In a floating zone, the planning board has a lot of discretion and then it goes back to the county council for final determination for like a PD zone. Now, in this particular zone, it is a Euclidean zone, which means that they develop according to the development standards in Chapter 59. So if the planning board only looks at the standards in Chapter 59, well, that removes any neighborhood concerns about parking, about tree canopy, about lot to lot flooding, even access, you know, in optional floating zones. If the driveway entrance is facing another property and headlights can cause problems to the confronting property owner, the planning board has a discretion to either deny it or move the driveway entrance. So that's what I'm talking about. Does the planning board have the necessary discretion to be able to make these item by item decisions? That's all. And that's all I have to ask. Thank you, Cheryl.
I appreciate it. I will, I can, I have to do a side by side comparison on that. So I don't want to, you know, speak to something that I haven't done a side by side comparison on, but I can do that and I will follow.
Okay. All right, well, we're going to say thank you now. We've gone over time, but I appreciate the fact that you have answered every question that came up tonight and I thank you for that.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me. Really appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl and Andrew.
You are welcome.